Where are we?
FEMA consultant.
FEMA consultant. This is something that's come up a couple of times against the administrator. Can you give us your wisdom on this?
That was also an item that was addressed, I think, in December when I was here. I've had the opportunity to meet with the county emergency management director three times in the last two-plus months. I've had two meetings with the Volusia City-County and Managers meeting and talk with the other managers in reference to FEMA and FROCK. And we're sorely lacking in the fact that we don't have the expertise and the tracking in reference to the FROCK survey. So let me split those out and we'll deal with FEMA first. You had an agreement with your girl Friday, and in that agreement, it didn't have anything to do with FEMA storms. The contract that was there had to do more with my duties and Roxanne and I working together in reference to agendas and what have you. So I'm not sure what that was. But in talking with the consultants, time was spent on helping the city get its application and process in for Hurricane Ian. And during that process, you know, what she found is we were very deficient in the sense that, yes, we did a great job of getting Lake Helen cleaned up for anybody else, but we didn't follow the rules and regulations that were required by FEMA. So there was a lot of work done to put that in place to try to even get us in line for storms. There is no city or county in the meetings that I've had that have received their FEMA money. They're all in some various stage of processing. So I'm looking at the FEMA agreement. It was an amended and updated agreement with Con on that so that in the event that we have a future storm, then we have a contractor in place that can already start the process to make sure that what we need to be doing, we're doing it following both, what is it? The FEDM, what is the Florida version of FEMA?
Florida Department of Emergency Management.
There we go, thanks. And then FEMA itself. And so this is just bringing that agreement you have in place. Costs, you know, she's got her rate in there in terms of, you know, the fee, but it's only if we have a storm because this is already, work was already done on Ian. So this is going forward. So this would be, you know, having someone in place, you know, so that we're not backtracking and putting the documents together. We're almost trying to pre-plan and get better prepared. In those three meetings that I've had, the county director was out with us actually this week and sat down and learned quite a few things in the sense of what you can piggyback and what you can't. And I know we've got local vendors and things that we use, but again, we paid the vendors, but we haven't been paid. And I just want to make sure that we're in a better position going forward if we get hit with another storm. So bringing back the revised contract involving the FEMA assistance to walk us through and help get through the process. And when I went to the meeting in the county and to their EOC center and got the tour and we have a desk and whatever there, we have to work that out and making sure we have a person. But as I told the director, I thought I was back in high school with foreign language class. And everything those people spoke about and every acronym they used, I mean, so every city either has somebody or somebodies that they spend their time doing this permanently. And we don't have the expertise.
Well, I've been the most vocal on this, so I will say something.
Sorry.
I said I'll say something.
Oh?
That's okay?
I thought you were saying something.
No, no. I've been strongly opposed to this in the past for a few different reasons, one of which is because I felt as though the person that created the issues should be the person to fix it. Now with our new CA coming into an existing problem, he feels as though he needs help navigating some of this mess. And I feel it's our duty to help him by giving him the tools he needs. And for those reasons, I would be a yes on this now. Change my mind.
Anyway.
I agree with everything that Commissioner Bishop just said. I was just looking through the pack and I actually saw that in Rowlett or the pond or someplace back there, doing the inspections, that called for FROCK as well. So will Girl Friday be taking care of all of those tasks?
It's a two-part process. I don't look at the first one just in reference to FEMA and dealing with a specific storm. But the state, you know, has this FROCK process and it's an assessment. And while we missed the deadline for 2024?
No, we didn't.
Well, okay, I was told by the county that the gentleman that...
Well, according to the Florida Department of Emergency Management, Kevin Guthrie, we are in for 2024. We got until May 15th to do our DRA.
But we won't get the assessment and the survey done. I mean, in reference...
That doesn't matter. We're still in.
Yes, we already have a score of 20, but doing nothing.
But that's 20% of zero.
Yes, yes. And the county with doing a full assessment is 56.
So that's better than 300 or something other cities that aren't on it for 2024.
That's why I'm asking, and as a separate item, we want to talk about the two at some time, is then contracting with her to complete the FROCK DRA, five-eight hours, that can meet that deadline, and that would be maximum $720. And then task two, which is knowing that the county right now probably came out with the best score at 56, and nobody's going to get 85. I think that's the high of what that's at, so I mean, the expectation, but is to try to get the highest score overall. And that's going to mean going back and updating our purchasing policies, certain HR policies, how you pay people. I mean, there's a lot of technicalness that needs to be done. And so that portion could take another 22 to 30 hours of the maximum. If that happened, it would be 2,700. So that would get us started in the FROCK process and could then better prepare us for a, getting a score for 2024, Roger, and then improving that, you know, as we go forward.
Well, if any of the commissioners ever thinks about going, I spent an hour and a month on the second Monday, listening to Florida Legal City's City Strong webinar. And April 8th happened to be Florida Emergency Management Day. And they had speakers from Holly Smith from Sanibel Island, Horton Bonaparte from Sanford, and Doug Barber from Crystal River, who also talked about Mexico Beach. And they talked about all the different things of recommended actions, what partnerships are needed, what to have in place, which was very important. Brought up one that we had an issue with in the '04 hurricanes was a build-back ordinance, which allows people in an emergency situation to build their car back as on the same-sized lot in the same-sized house instead of being denied like we did in the '04 and '05. And pre-positioned contracts. They also talked about having lists of phone numbers and contacts, knowing who your FEMA representative is when they're assigned, figuring out what finance department needs. Talked about long-term recovery, which FEMA is a long-term recovery reimbursement system. And Florida Emergency Management has emergency grants that they can give to make it an immediate plan. Talked about what to communicate to the public. And then the manager of the Florida Department of Emergency Management, Kevin Guthrie, talked about FROCK. And he said, "We need to have in place a debris contract, disaster recovery plan, which includes contracts for facilities and bridges to be repaired and refurbished, and a good finance company to monitor everything for us." Also, he talked about that for 2024, 111 cities out of 411 in Florida are on the list for FROCK in Florida. And I looked at the list, they had the list there, Lake Helen was on the list. So that's about 300 cities in Florida that aren't on it for 2024. So they're not, they're going to have to go through the old process where we at least, we get the FROCK process. FROCK provides standardizations, procurement, procedures, and assessments. And June 1st starts the 2025 cycle. So after June 1st, we have to reapply. So if we have everything done going into now, it makes reapplying easier for 2025.
Any further discussion?
Just have a quick question about the contract for Ms. Conne Evans. The first page of the contract, section four, under compensation, the very last line, "If overnight accommodations are necessary, client shall reimburse consultant upon provision of a receipt in amount reasonable and not to exceed," and it says NA. So does that mean we are not providing because she is locals, so we don't have a need for that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm all the way from here. Anybody else wants to...
Grab a smile, get ready to say, "Does anybody else have anything else to say? Is there a motion?"
He was looking at me.
Well, that's because you were saying you were going to make a motion.
I'm starting to talk.
I make a motion, we accept a contract with your girl Friday.
I second it.
To our FROCK contract.
Motion made and second has been passed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, aye.
Can I clarify? You said for FROCK.
Yeah, that was the other one, so...
Well, we have our covers open, so...
Okay, so we don't need a separate motion for the FEMA consultant?
No, because it's the Florida recovery thing covers FEMA.
Okay. It's all in.
Okay, that'll help. The reason I brought it in two is because the southern one was kind of brought back as an addendum or amendment two, which is the issue of what if they're through. So I'll make that there.
All right. Do you have something else?
I have a question. I just...
Yeah, yeah, that's not an issue. Yeah, no, that, no, that doesn't... Okay, that's not a blue and dollars.
But we're, we're down to the young cars now. This is a public forum, time has been allocated a lot toward the public comment on any topic or items as now needed. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes and address the commission, speak as much as approach to what you have to say. Allison, this is the fifth.
Thank you. I apologize for being kind of a Johnny company. And if you discuss in other evenings, I apologize for bringing it up again. But the Strawberry Festival was a fantastic event. I was not able to attend last year, but this year I was looking forward to it. And of my invitees, the parking area that was designated for it initially was full 20 minutes before the event started. Part of that might have been leadover from the market in the park, which was very well attended that day as well. And the parking signs were not clear. The people staffing the parking, I guess it was the boys and girls club, were not clear as to where people could park once there was overflow parking. So I just would like to request that in the future of events of that kind where we are expecting parking to be needed, that signage and staffing be a little more clear and perhaps we can ask some of the, I don't know, the property owners or businesses around to mark their areas if they do not want parking or do want parking, just so that everyone can enjoy our events. If we're expecting people from out of town, we can't give them directions to City Hall and expect them to know where it is. So we need to have a little bit more signage and a little bit more directions. And perhaps the people staffing the event, we need to park further away and allow closer parking for the people who are there. So I apologize again if you discuss it or anything. Do you want to bring that up?
No, thank you. That's where we're at.
Mayor, if I can clarify on that, though. The citizens of Lake Helen need to know that was not a city event. That's a private event. So we don't have anything to do with the staffing. We didn't have anything to do with parking and signage. I think what we did is put up tapes so that people didn't park in people's front yards along the road or what have you. So those things there may be well improved points, but that's a private event. It's not a city event. So that would be something that, I mean, we can pass on to them. We don't have, I don't have control over that.
And that's one of the advantages and disadvantages of being a small town, is that there is a distinction between the county road, the city road, a outside event, a city event. So we tend to kind of all morph together. But like you said, it wasn't our event, we just provided the facilities. And that may be something that we need to take up next year because they didn't have that conversation. They might not have, you know, been aware that there, that there was an issue. Like in two weeks, we have the auto show, the, I think it's two weeks, Tuesday and April.
You should like Saturday.
Yeah, and that's going to be another large event, a lot of vehicles. And we've been handling that for the last 10 years of March. So, you know, pretty much got a good track record with that. Anyway, thank you, Allison.
Can I speak to that just for one moment? Since that's not a city event, but yet they used the Equestrian Center.
Arena.
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 Yeah, they ran it. They ran it out. How do we keep a conflict from happening? Because I know there was a show that was supposed to go on where the Equestrian Center had been the Strawberry Festival, Luke and Ian. Is there any way, I mean, do...
Yes, technically, they have a license agreement between the city and the Equestrian Center. And every year, right around now, they're supposed to give us their calendar for the next year. And they're supposed to check the dates off, I believe is what the license agreement says. I can go back and double-check that, but I think it's in May or something like that. They're supposed to give us the, their calendar of events when they will be using the Equestrian Center for the next upcoming 12 months.
So that's the Equestrian Center, that's like, to you. Is that...
Yeah, they give, we have a license agreement, I believe, and then they're supposed to give us a calendar of their events, like May or something like that.
With the huge...
Seems like the last two, first half, seemed to be Rosemary, Rosemarie Latham. She left. She was permitted to introduce herself. She's a candidate for the Florida House. Jim Troy, she spoke property. So that takes care of the...
Judith, do you want to speak?
Judith?
I just wanted to know...
Yes, come on, please.
Judith Fuller, 549, Diddy Drive. Just wanted to know if y'all had spoken, gotten together about my property.
It's the only time we can get together, talk with each other.
City administrator.
I have a meeting tomorrow with the city attorney and the city engineer at 10:30 to address Ms. Fuller's property and the other property that has similar issues. So we have a meeting on that tomorrow.
Which of the portions is that?
Yeah.
And then will I get an email from you?
Well, not be rude, but I respond back to the mayor and commission. And I'll do that, but right now I have no idea what that email would be, so I...
Right. I just, you know, just want to be kind of like get to know, you know, wondering what's going on, what's, you know, what are y'all thinking? You know, it's just, you know, I've been in the house since 2015. I don't lose my house, you know, but it is something. So I just need to kind of get what's going on, please.
Yes, ma'am.
We typically can't do very much on it until they get done with their review process and give us a report, then we can do some. So we're still waiting, we're still waiting for them to get the report. Takes time for them to mesh their times together, so...
Okay, thank you.
Public forum has been done. For the two points that are not on our agenda, Rick Mullins was nominated as the employee of the year by the major cities. Oh, okay. I read it. Good afternoon, I'm writing this email to anyone under this bag change, not a subject out. This is a chamber.
Not a less sorry, this is the police department.
Right.
Sorry.
Okay. Rick Mullins has been nominated and selected as employee of the year. This is his third rodeo. Two of the last, this is the second one that he's won at. First one, I nominated the first two times. So we have Rick Mullins, our city public service director. And also, police officer Trevor Gray is nominated by, now that's your part, Greg. You want to take that?
No, go ahead, Greg.
Uh, no, this is completely...
You want to be the cause?
Okay, yeah, I had an issue with that, too. Good afternoon, I'm writing this email to anyone under the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce valor awards of the email on Thursday, the 18th of April. The location is the Deltona Center of the city of Deltona. Officer Trevor Gray was selected by, as the Lake Helen Police Department as his nominee. And I recently learned that tickets for the event are $65. This is from the chief. I have previously spoken to Officer Gray and he wishes to have his children, wife, child, and parents attend. I spoke with a member of the Chamber of Commerce yesterday and discovered that Officer Gray and his guests must purchase tickets. A coupon code was sent for me to take $30 off of Officer Gray's ticket. I've never heard of such an award recipient or an immediate family purchase ticket. I personally do not agree with the practice. I want to give everyone a heads up and request that the city purchase Officer Gray and his family's ticket to the event to borrow at, at tonight's commission meeting. So if this was any...
Mayor, I've already sent out a reply and I sent an email to the Biden. That doesn't need your approval in terms of the fact that the dollar amount. And so we've already told Officer that we'll cover him and his family. And for those who want to attend, the conversation that the chief was, I think, more expressive was the fact that, I'll be very honest, to honor somebody and then ask them to pay for their own lunch.
It's basically...
This just didn't seem like it set well. But since he was nominated and we've gone through there, we've gone head and greed that we'll cover those costs. If any of you want to attend that, we'll cover that cost. Chief and I have said that if something like that comes up again, we'll get the details ahead of time because it's the first time I've known somebody getting nominated and getting an award and then being told, oh, by the way, you need to pay for your lunch.
I think we should definitely reach out to them because we joined the Chamber of Commerce because the Deland Chamber of Commerce has shut down. And the members that were in at the Deland Chamber of Commerce, they were then automatically transferred to the Hispanic Chamber. We joined, and by us joining is where we get the information that they were looking for nominees and we were able to successfully do that. My, I guess the one point that, that I guess is a good point out is that we're recognizing our employees beyond the cities, 4x4 square, and that it does give us a good opportunity to promote our city and our individual sense. So I'll, I'll be looking forward to going. And but we will have, I will have a conversation with that chamber. Any other questions? All right, yeah. That wasn't even a question, that was just an insert in between the public, the commission reports. So, that being said, start with zone one.
I don't have anything at this time.
Vice mayor?
Got a couple of good events coming up here shortly. For all our veterans out there, Veterans Stand Down is set for April 19th and 20th at the Volusia County Fairgrounds from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Veterans and their families can talk to representatives from multiple agencies for career education, resources, homeless, veterans' resources, veterans' benefits, and healthcare. Free lunch will be provided by Bull and Boar Barbecue Supply Company on Friday and State Senator Tom Wright on Saturday. They will also have boxes of food provided from Farm Share, a nonprofit food bank. They will be a part of Volusia County's Hiring Our Heroes Initiative. Florida Department of Health will provide Moderna and Genios vaccines, blood pressure checks, and heart camp kits. Claims processors from the Veterans Administration Regional Office in St. Peterborough will help veterans who have issues on pending claims. So if any of the veterans want to go out there and see what they have available, it's a good opportunity to find out some information. Now from Volusia County Emergency Management, town hall meetings aim to enhance Volusia County residents' hurricane preparedness. So they're having some town hall meetings. The schedule includes Deland Regional Library, 5:30 to 6:45 PM. On Wednesday, April 24th, Daytona Beach Regional Library at 5:30 to 6:45. Wednesday, May 1st, Ormond Beach. And Thursday, May 9th, Deltona Regional Library. On May 22nd, New Somerta Beach Library. On May 28th, the Ford Orange Library. On June 12th. If anybody else wants to host one, contact the Department of Emergency Management and they will schedule additional hurricane preparedness information.
Zone three.
About the only thing that we have going on right now is that there will be less traffic in the Villas because the snowbirds are getting ready to go back home next week. But I will say, they've been having a great time, lots of parties going on and a lot of good fun. What's most important to me though is to hear that Miss Deanie and Miss Betty are back in the museum, that it's opened up. I know they're happy about that. And let's hope that we just keep moving on and getting it fixed where y'all feel really comfortable.
I just have two questions. I'd like to get a report from Jim or somebody on the cemetery, what the progress is, and also the basketball court.
Can I just, sorry, vacation, cemetery?
What's happening with the, with Ricky and those?
That's better for me.
Yeah.
You don't know anything about it.
All right. I know you bury a lot of bodies here.
Blackwell's just about done the survey. I had her stop... cemetery, what the progress is, and also the basketball court.
Can I just, sorry, cemetery?
What's happening with Ricky and us?
That's better for me.
Yeah.
You don't know anything about it.
I know you bury a lot of bodies here.
Black Will's just about done with the survey. I had her stop for a little bit because we had to catch up on what they're doing. They put rods down and reinforced now, but I'm trying to figure out a way that we could either put PVC down or something that marked the main areas, like A, B, C. And then they went in and marked the other areas for us. And they're going to mark one whole set even further in for us, so we can see how to mark. So they're almost done. We've probably got like three sections left for them to do. And then they're going to make our whole new map for us and where the things are. But we have a lot of grave sites that are in the driveway, which we figured that was going to happen. What I want to do when we get done is take and, I want to go in there and cut the dirt roads and mill them, so we have the roads there now, because it's all dirt, we can't tell. And that will help decide what we have in there. So when they get done doing that, we're going to rip that up and mill it, which will help people pull in and know where to park. And they'll also know about the parking lot yet, because we were quite off on where they originally were. So it's come along.
So are we driving a little bit?
No, we weren't driving a little bit, but the road's here, and the roads have been here.
Okay.
So, but it's come along. You can actually drive if you want. They've got the orange flags on a lot of it, but they did put rebar down and caps. I just want to get something we can put permanent bigger, we can mark it bigger, so we can go out there and, but when they're done, we'll be able to actually physically go out there and mark something. So it is really nice to see what they're doing as well. Well worth the money to get it done, but we're probably about 75% done with everything on it.
Okay, cool.
Okay?
I can update you on the basketball court. Actually, Derek will be out tomorrow. We've got a meeting with Scott, but talked with him, so it could be tomorrow for next week, very latest. He's just preparing the documents, so that if you're going out to bid, knowing on the estimated cost on that, you know, we're looking at, you know, just, I think ballpark, somebody was saying 26,000 for one court. So it's just getting the bid documents ready. And last I talked to them, I possibly could have it tomorrow, meaning to give to Rick to go in and get that process going. And if not tomorrow, it could be next week. So we should be able to go to bid for that within the next week or something.
Okay, thanks.
Can I say one more thing before we go get done? Latency project's done. County put pipe across, all pipes there. They should be tomorrow. Early looks out, asphalting all the repairs there, so it should be back to normal. We're going to have a little bit of concrete work I want to do on the edge. Have our concrete guy go out there for the spillways, but that's all been completed and everything. The county did an excellent job. And we haven't done that now, but other side of the road is collapsing, so we wouldn't build down that road. It's another good, right? So that's just not believable.
I really appreciate your, your list here. It's got 50 things that you've done. And that's, that's why you're Employee of the Year for the city.
It's my guys, not all of me. It's my guys and everybody else.
And we appreciate that. Last thing is that Sunday, the Santa Club invited, you and that's who it's listing?
Okay.
They invited, let me get it out of my file. Permission to my, they, you know, permission to my, and myself are going to be at their Santa Club, which is the annual, I guess they give out the awards. It's going to be 11 o'clock in Orange City. And look forward to seeing that. Anything else? Was it good of the order? I can hit this thing here. Mush and adjourn. Meeting.
I got it there. I did it. I don't like it. And I'd asked him, you know, the other question with the Volusia County, is we're not having our building. I was still, you know, that's what's going on.